...the order of the agenda, just so folks understand. I believe most people here are interested in the budget, which I am as well, but we've got a few things to do beforehand, one of which is to rise to the pledge of allegiance, please.
... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pursuant to school committee policies and procedures, we have a 12-minute public comment period for folks from the district. Just please come up, identify yourself by name and your address for the record, and you've got no more than three minutes, and this is going to be open for 12 minutes. So, anyone who'd like to speak right now, take your way up to the podium, please. I'd also like to note, as we have people moving up to the podium, that we are being recorded and streamed live on YouTube, and it can be watched on the Bridgewater Rainham channel for those purposes. And do I see anyone coming up? I thought I did, but apparently not. All right, going for a third and last time. All right, we'll close public comment then. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes dated February 26th and March 12th, approval of general ledger warrants, which is all the general expenses we have from March 16th, uh, March 6th and March 20th, acceptance of gifts, and you always want to highlight these for folks, Bridgewater Education Foundation, which had a great gala, as I've heard. Unfortunately, we were out of town for that. Building critical thinking to Bridgewater Middle School, a new sum of about $6,000, just shy, and then two grants, uh, a grant to, uh, a grant to, uh, St. Luke Robotics at RMS for $3,700, lifelong fitness and wellness to RMS for $2,200, working out to almost that same $6,000. See thy words at Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School for almost $4,000. The total awarded was just shy of $16,000, so that's awesome, and thank them very much. We'd also like to thank Bristol County Savings Bank for donation to our wellness fair of $500. We'll also be approving the personnel report, and then a declaration of surplus around some old library books that are kind of patterned and worn, some IT surplus that is out of phase, broken, and then other surplus furniture, equipment, facilities as deemed unusable. I will note that the budget subcommittee did in fact review all these surplus items and found that they were in fact unnecessary to donate. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Made by Mr. DeMarino, seconded by Mrs. King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. All right, moving on to correspondence and recognition. Really, correspondence, if anyone can guess, was about the budget, multiple emails supporting the budget, asking questions about the budget, looking for more information about the budget, and we've tried to keep everybody as up to date as possible, as I've told everyone I've been able to respond to, and I hope I responded to everybody. It's a very fluid situation, it's fluid even into tonight, so we're, uh, we're trying to stay on top of it, but, you know, we don't all have the, uh, all have the answers. So, that said, we'll move on to recognition of the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School wrestling team and Coach Farrell. Mr. Powers, would you like to introduce the...
Sure, thank you so much. Yes, we're very excited tonight to host our high school wrestling team. They've had quite the season. It's not their first successful season. They've actually had quite a run the last few years, but I know they've racked up quite a few postseason awards, and so we're excited tonight to invite Coach Farrell down to say a few words, share some of the team accomplishments, and we'd love to have the wrestlers come up and greet the school committee.
Yes.
I just want to thank Mr. Powers and Mr. Timothy Fitzgibbons for having us here tonight. We really appreciate everyone. Your support has been tremendous this year, and just wanted to say that this season, our student-athletes compile was probably the best wrestling season we have seen in about 15 years. We went 23-4 as a dual-meat team. We also won three tournaments that were over 50-plus points, which was the Wayland Holiday Tournament, the Mahfia Holiday Tournament, and then we won Division II South Sectional Tournament by about 94 points, which is awesome. The boys also placed second at D2 States, which hadn't been done in a while, seventh at All States, and then 10th at New England. 10th at New England was the first that's been done since 2008. We also had the girls wrestling as well, where they took third at States and seventh at All States, I mean, uh, seventh at New England. We're just super proud of everyone on the team, it's a special group of kids. Your support hasn't been done without that, so we really thank everyone for coming and supporting us this season, and we're looking forward to the future.
And I'd just like to, before you and Mr. Farrell, I want to turn it over to Mr. DeMarino, because he was on one of the best wrestling teams, I think, PR's ever seen. All right, Mr. DeMarino?
Congratulations. I didn't have much of a wrestling career, leaving kind of beat the crap out of me every single practice, so congratulations.
But, um, yeah, we're just looking forward to having everyone's support for the next future coming up, so if anyone, any of you guys want to come up and talk a little?
Any seniors?
Okay. All right, thank you guys again, we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Coach Farrell. Moving on to educational reports, Student Advisory Council report, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to bring to the stand the Student Advisory Council, Ms. Rachel's correspondent.
Good evening, school committee. Tonight, I will be speaking on a new event that appeared at VR as well as agreed and prompted by one of VR clubs. The senior class officers, Cole Virgins, Molly Ferrosa, Hannah Beeman, and myself led a V-Bores event on St. Patrick's Day. This event was a game that all students and staff at VR participated in. The rules were as follows: You can buy as many necklaces as you select, and then play rock, paper, scissors through the day with someone else that had a necklace. And then, the winner takes all the necklaces that the other person has. At the end of the day, we took a group of students that had the largest number of necklaces, and had them play rock, paper, scissors with that to find out who are champions. Junior Kayden Blake came out victorious with over 100 beads, who got a $100 gift card of his choice, such a public as a prize. This was such a fun event that the senior class office hopes will become a VR tradition. Also, the Deca Business Club competed at the state competition in Seaport Hospital. We brought our nine district qualifiers. My friend Selena Georgia Coppolas competed in Quick Store Management and placed fifth in the state. I competed in Personal Financial Literacy and placed fourth in the state. We both came out victorious and now qualify to attend the HJ National Competition in Orlando, Florida. We will both go to ICDC from April 20th to the 25th, and it will truly be an amazing time, and we will get to meet Deca members from across the globe and engage in ICDC Deca traditions. We will get Decanite at University Studios, where the entire park is going to get shut down just for Deca. And so, wish the winner and I luck as we compete against the best of the best. I hope you all have a wonderful night, and I now withdraw.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to share a recent win for the Winter Color Guard program at the high school. They placed first at the New Bedford Color Guard competition, an award they have not received in years. They are off to color guard finals this Saturday in Salem, Massachusetts, to finish off their very successful season. The next event I would like to speak on is Mr. VR, which is sponsored by FOWRA. There were 10 contestants: Noah Perry Lewis, Colin Fitzsimmons, Mason Payton, T. Hamlet, Jace Penardi, Owen King, Deshaun Polk, Brady Matson, Matthew Holton, and myself. There was the boys' dance to kick off the night, the funware section, the talent portion, the formalware, the girls' dance, and the procession to finish it off. For the formalware section, Tex Town by Bakerano is generous each year to let the boys wear his fabulous suits and show off his dedication to his business. The winner of Mr. Congeniality was Noah Perry Lewis. Best funware was Owen King, dressed up as a VR cheerleader. Best talent was Mason Payton and Jace Penardi with a duo choreographed dance on rollerblades in those inspired jumpsuits. Best formalware was Deshaun Polk in an all-black suit, and the runner-up of the event was Colin Fitzsimmons, and the winner of VR was myself. I'm very proud of this win, but most of all, working with the other contestants and members of FOWRA was so incredibly fun to put on such a great show. Thank you so much, and I would like to welcome Sophia to the stand.
Good evening. I'm sorry for being late. If you saw me run in, no, I did not, I walked. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school committee, and superintendent Powers and audience. I hope you're all well this evening. Today, I'll be speaking to you about updates from TJ Square Robotics, a robotics team here at our school. We recently competed in our two district events, and while we did not win, we ended a final set vote. And we were, not only did we go very far as getting second, we were also honored with prestigious awards at both, which is not something we always get, so we were very, very proud of this fact. At our first competition, we were awarded the judges' award, meaning that while we did not fit a specific category of award, we deserved recognition despite that. They found something within our team, which, I'm sorry, people, why do you answer to what? But they found something in our team that they found deserved recognition and honor, so we were given a banner and a medal. At a second competition that we went to, we were also bestowed the Team Spirit Award. This award declares that we have the most enthusiasm and teamwork. I like to think it's also because of our tie dye. We are not just with it. Through all of our hard work, we've become eligible to participate in the New England District Championships, and as of yesterday, the day before, we actually were accepted, so I can now say at the time when I wrote my report that we are going. We're very thrilled and we are very excited. Waltz Bar Drive, I would love to see any of you there, and I would love to introduce you to the World of Robotics, so if you do come, come find me. We'll be, as I said, obnoxious tie-dye people. The only condition is you have to wear it. We have bandanas with us. Thank you, and I now introduce Kayla to the stand.
Good evening. On March 6th, Ms. Watson and myself went over to Rainham Middle School to read Dr. Seuss's Oh, The Places You'll Go, to the eighth grade class as part of Read Across America Week. We also answered some questions that students had prepared for us, giving them an insight into what it's like being a student at the high school. It was great to go back to my old school and give advice to a group that I was once a part of, and see students eager to learn more about their future environment. Additionally, students at the high school recently completed their course selection for the next year. Freshmen completed theirs at the beginning of March, sophomores chose theirs mid-March, and juniors finalized theirs last week. There was also an opportunity for students to attend the college fair hosted by VR Guidance during the school day today. Colleges have representatives at tables answering any questions that the students may have, and pass out flyers about their slogan. These were great opportunities for students to discover what they might attend today. Thank you, and I welcome, and welcome, Sophia to the stand.
Good evening. On March, on Monday, March 24th, the Winter Club and Student Council started this spring hallway decoration contest. The first word's theme is you girl-girl, the second word is change, have to handle, and the third is you do you. It's our hope that this contest will make the hallways a little more interesting during this time of year. The board that decorates their hallways the best will be crownless. On another note, the Software School Council is planning a fundraiser for April. We will collect gift cards, and thus get to a raffle, and the winners will be announced at our parents' home this week. They can't wait to have and not complete their state of experience.
Thank you. Ms. King, anything further?
Uh, just one thing, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank the Student Advisory Council for being here, and as you heard from their report, I'm always so excited at how many accolades they receive. These students give their report every month. There's someone involved at so many activities, and everything that they're involved in, they're winning awards, they're out there in the community, they're participating, so I really want to thank them for doing that. And I also wanted to note, I did sign them up. The Student Advisory Council, myself, and Mrs. Curly, their advisor, are going to be going to the Day on the Hill, which is powered by MASCE on May 6th. So, they have a whole day about different things and how to advocate with your legislators, and I set up a couple of appointments with Senator Duney, Duner, rather, with them, as well as Representative Gallagher, so that should be a great field trip for them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. King. Moving on, and under educational reports, MCAS report, Mr. Powers.
Good evening. I did want to provide a quick update on MCAS, and then obviously I know I'll stay up here for the REEDs collaborative update. Really not much in the way of MCAS. I just wanted to clarify, because we have started the assessment season, you know, when the voters voted to remove the competency determination as part of MCAS in November at the elections, that did not, uh, they did not vote to do away with MCAS, just to remove competency determination. So I just wanted to clarify, districts are still required to administer MCAS. We've obviously started here at the high school, and will continue on throughout the spring, and those results will be used for our accountability ratings that the department puts out. So we, you know, we have sent correspondence out to families, just encouraging them to make sure that, you know, the students are taking it seriously. I know our schools are having those conversations as well, because, you know, they still will have an impact on the district in terms of how we're rated going forward, and so we just wanted to stress the importance of that. We obviously are developing local competency determination requirements that was part of the law, that the responsibility is now back on the district. Pleased to say that, you know, the state is making some progress. It seems as though that they may go back to establishing some type of statewide requirements, but more to come on that, it may or may not happen, but they've put out some initial correspondence. We have internally developed a competency determination for the short term, and pleased to say that any of the students in the class of 2025 that hadn't passed their MCAS, would they either show proficiency enough to earn their competency determination, or we have a couple of students that you aren't, or an alternative pass, and then we'll look ahead to the class of 26, and then beyond. Hopefully by then we get some additional guidance from the department. But again, just to clarify, because I know a question came up about whether or not MCAS is going away, MCAS is, is here to stay, just the only thing that changes is the competency determination. Does that answer any questions?
Questions for Mr. Powers? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Powers, for that report, and as you said, why not stay up there for REEDs collaborative update, please?
Thank you. I did share this information with the budget sub, and just wanted to share with the full school committee as well. REEDs Collaborative, one of our local special education collaborators that some of our students do attend and receive services through, are in the process of potentially purchasing a building for their deaf and hard of hearing program. That program is currently housed over at, uh, within the northern public schools. Norton unfortunately is running out of space, and so they're not sure long-term if they're going to be able to house the full deaf and hard of hearing program. And so, REEDs has reached out to their other local districts, seeing if there's any space, certainly tried to accommodate, I know other districts did as well, you know, potentially a classroom here or a classroom there, but not able to house the full deaf and hard of hearing programs. That, that has prompted them to look to either lease or purchase of space. They are right now pursuing the purchase or lease, and obviously the cost of that purchase will be potentially assessed back to the districts that are sending students to the deaf and hard of hearing program, which we currently do. We do have a new staff member this year, a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing, so a lot of the services that we're using REEDs for, we've now been able to start to provide in the house. So that assessment may not necessarily be added to us if the vote goes through. I know a lot of member districts have concerns about absorbing that cost for a new building. It, it looks as though that potentially right now, with the, obviously, you know, executing the sale, it could potentially be an additional $30,000 that we would be assessed. Obviously, much like other superintendents, I've expressed concern, obviously expressed concern to the budget sub. We'll have to vote, when I say me, meaning the superintendents that make up the board at REEDs, and I'm not sure how that vote is going to go, because I know a lot, a lot of other superintendents have concerns about the district taking on that current cost. That wouldn't mean that the deaf and hard of hearing program would be dissolved, it just wouldn't necessarily be able to be housed under one location like it is now. So, it, it's not as though those services would be going away if the purchase did not go through, but obviously more to come on that, but I just wanted to provide you a quick update, because I do know that is a conversation. Obviously, it's budget negotiations.
Questions on REEDs? It sounds like no action is needed. No questions on REEDs? Thank you very much, Mr. Powers. Okay, getting down to the main event of the evening here, Budget Subcommittee Report from Ms. King. Before we get going on that, I just want to say a few things. Everybody up here at this table, everybody in the audience, our friends from the Bridgewater Town Council, I thought I saw a Bridgewater Finance Committee member or two in here, I'm not sure, I see a Rainham, uh, Selectman at Rainham Finance Committee members, I see Mr. Barnes, the Town Administrator over there at Rainham, and I'm sorry if I missed anybody else, it's a big room, and my glasses don't work very well, I apologize. So, anyway, everyone here wants what's in the best interest of the district, right? And what we're trying to do is figure that out, and it's a balance all the time, because we have other parts of the town that need funding and so on and so forth, and everyone's heard this before. We had a public hearing, and you know what, when you do, when you have a public hearing? You do it to hear people. And I believe the budget subcommittee heard people at that public hearing. The budget that Mr. King is going to propose and suggest came from the budget subcommittee unanimously, and is significantly larger than what was proposed two weeks ago here. I'm sure there's still a lot of people who won't be happy with it, as I said, two weeks ago at this time. I'm sure there'll, there'll be people here who are not happy because it's not enough. I'm sure there are people here watching on TV who won't be happy because they think it's way too much. But I truly believe everyone wants to do what's in the best interest of the district. And so, with that, with that hope in mind and that, that thought in mind, I believe Ms. King has a slide presentation?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a quick update for our budget subcommittee.
Okay.
And then I will do, I put together a very short slide deck, just because...
Should we sit out front?
Uh, let me do my, um, and then I'll let you know, I have to turn on the slide.
Okay.
I did prepare a slide deck just because the budget did change significantly, so I wanted people to be able to see what changed, what the reasoning was, and what the impact of that was. So, just quickly, the budget subcommittee met on March 18th, 2025, at 5:30 in the superintendent's conference room. At that time, we did have a base update. Ms. Ajenti updated the budget sub as to the current status of the base revolving accounts through February, and trends around the end of the fiscal year. Although the pre-K base and RMAC base were still running in the red, all other programs are trending to be in a positive by the end of the year, an estimated positive $89,000. Mr. McCray of Park &amp; Rec has agreed to look into licensing and a space to absorb the RMAC program also starting the next fiscal year. So we will most likely be able to take the RMAC program offline, there's only maybe about 10 students in that program right now. So no action was taken, but we did get an update, and I did ask the business office to give us a final update at the end of the fiscal year, to make sure that we were still trending and that we ended where we believe that we should be. Mr. Powers did give a REEDs collaborative update, which he just gave to the full committee right now. We did look over the declaration of surplus of library books from Mitchell Elementary, which was approved by the consent agenda today. We had a lengthy fiscal year 2026 budget discussion, wherein Mr. Fitzgibbons updated the budget sub regarding the budget working group, as well as his meeting with Senator Driscoll and Representative Gallagher. We discussed any updates that we had received regarding the budget, regarding emails, in-person meetings, and meetings with officials from both towns, as well as various scenarios of the budget, and what each increase would mean regarding staffing and class size. We also discussed how much more we could possibly potentially contribute from END or reducing capital from the school committee, as well as attempting to reduce any cost drivers such as transportation and special education costs. Mr. Powers gave the members of the budget subcommittee a draft of an FAQ to put up budget information on the district website, to help the community keep updated on answers to questions they had been sending us regarding different aspects of the budget process. We approved the March 4th, 2025 budget subcommittee meeting minutes. On March 24th, 2025, the budget subcommittee met again at 5:30 in the superintendent's conference room. We again had a lengthy discussion regarding the fiscal year 2026 budget. Mr. Fitzgibbons updated the budget sub regarding the budget working group, and what they had discussed at that time, and going forward, how that would work. The budget subcommittee discussed any updates they had received regarding the budget again from emails, in-person meetings we had been going to, and meetings with officials from both towns. Again, we looked at various scenarios and what level of extra funding we felt could make an impact on class size and special education. We looked at specific ways to reduce cost drivers, especially the transportation, health insurance, and special education. Mr. Powers updated members regarding the FAQ he had previously presented and budget documents, which had been added to a tab on the district website for the community to access. We also discussed what impact an increased budget would have regarding the space, and if it would be sustainable year over year, as well as regarding staffing. Regarding facilities used, as we assessed all departments for cost reductions and increasing revenue, Mr. Powers indicated that Mr. Chaka had indicated that he would like to bring forward the facility fees for review and a potential increase. Budget sub pointed out that they had not been reviewed since 2019, and requested recommendations for our next budget meeting. No other action was taken. We did also approve a declaration of surplus regarding facilities, a surplus of furniture and IT supplies, which again was in the consent agenda this evening. We approved the March 18th, 2025 budget subcommittee meeting minutes. Finally, at this time, I would like to present the fiscal year 2026 budget to be voted on in a... On March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, the budget Subcommittee met again at five thirty in the superintendent's conference room. We again had a lengthy discussion regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. Mr. Fitzgibbons updated the budget sub regarding the budget working group and what they had discussed at that time and going forward, how that would work. The budget Subcommittee discussed any updates they had received regarding the budget again from emails, in-person meetings we had been going to and meetings with officials from both towns. Again, we looked at various scenarios and what level of extra funding we felt could make an impact on class size and special education. We looked at specific ways to reduce cost drivers, especially the transportation, health insurance and special education. Mr. Powers updated members regarding the FAQ he had previously presented and budget documents which had been added to a tab on the district website for the community to access. We also discussed what impact an increased budget would have regarding the space and if it would be sustainable year over year, as well as regarding staffing. Regarding facilities used, as we assessed all departments for cost reductions and increasing revenue, Mr. Powers indicated that Mr. Chaka had indicated that he would like to bring forward the facility fees for review and a potential increase. Budgets have pointed out that they had not been reviewed since twenty nineteen and requested recommendations for our next budget meeting. No other action was taken. We did also approve a declaration of surplus regarding facilities, a surplus of furniture and IT supplies, which again was in the consent agenda this evening. We approved the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five budget Subcommittee meeting minutes. Finally, at this time, I would like to present the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget to be voted on and approved hopefully by the, by this evening by the school committee. Again, I have a short slide presentation if the committee would like to move to the front. So what has this budget Subcommittee been doing since March twelfth, twenty twenty five hearing? We did hold budget Subcommittee meetings on March eighteenth and March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. As I just stated, we had those two meetings to discuss various scenarios and also to work out what different members have been having for meetings and telephone calls and emails regarding revisions to the budget. We did attend Rainham FinCon meetings, budget working groups, meetings and emails with senators and representatives, emails, meetings and in-person discussions with community members, parents and town officials. Since March twelfth, we've taken all of the feedback from community, town officials, other school committee members and put this into this budget tonight. What was taken into consideration? We took the member input from the public hearing. We do need a two-thirds vote. We need at least six members to vote and approve this budget. So we did take their feedback when we made these revisions. We also need the town to approve the budget, so we need both sides. The input from the public hearing, as well as emails, telephone calls, text messages, in-person meetings, community members and town officials. Discussions regarding the status of the budget of each town. Will an increased budget be sustainable year over year? And how will this increased budget impact students directly? If we increase this budget, the level services budget we presented was not going to impact the students in a positive way. It was simply turning the page so we didn't lose any staff, but it was not going to positively impact our students. And this hopefully will increase our per people spending. That was another talking point at the public hearing. We are one of the lowest per people spending districts right now. This will tentatively, looking at the numbers, it potentially will bring us up to eighteen or nineteen thousand, which is still much lower than where we should be. But we're hoping incrementally to bring us up where we need to be. So I did put the nine thousand series budget up here just because things have changed so much regarding the level services budget versus this budget. To point this out, this middle line. The proposed fiscal year twenty six budget in that middle column, this is an increase. The subtotal is now up to one hundred and six million dollars, which is a fifty million dollar increase. We are, the majority of that, we did put more to the instructional services, which is teaching and staff. Again, that also affects our fixed costs because now we also have to add in health insurance costs. And that would be operational budget, a seventeen percent increase and overall fifteen point four five percent increase. This is the total fiscal year budget. I do have slides for each town as well. The total budget of Bridgewater Assessment Capital and Debt, forty-five million to Bridgewater for their assessment, which is a nineteen point four four percent increase. Rainham Assessment Capital and Debt, twenty-six million, which is a nineteen point two four percent increase. Overall, adding in capital and state aid, et cetera. It is a hundred and eleven million dollars, which is overall a fifteen point four five percent increase. If we remember, the level services budget was, I think, maybe a thirteen percent total overall budget. However, the original budget the towns were presenting that they could fund easily was only a three percent and a four percent increase. This is the breakdown by member town for Bridgewater with their assessments, capital and debt, which overall is a nineteen point four four percent to Bridgewater. And Rainham Assessment, twenty-one point seven six percent, total overall nineteen point two four. We left capital in here, we did not remove any of the capital. We did have discussions with both towns that we could reduce any capital that was not critical if they wanted to divert those funds towards the operational budget. So that was an option as well that we did speak to the towns regarding. So what is the impact of this budget versus the previous level services budget? Class size will be a priority in this fiscal year twenty six regarding staffing decisions. Limitations of class impact numbers. Based on our current enrollment moving up to the next grade, which is thirty-five students more since October first. If we look at the data every year, year over year for the past several years, we have added a net of a hundred students. At this point right now in the year, we are up thirty-five students. This also does not factor in any students moving in around the district for the rest of the year or kindergarten registration, which is ongoing until school starts. At this point, we have low kindergarten registration, but we cannot anticipate how many students will move in. So this is fluid as enrollment needs of students may change and we may have to reallocate. This is all based on the numbers we have now. If we have students move into the district at a particular grade or part of the district, that will change those numbers. Classroom size impact with average class sizes. We did it by grade level on each side of the district. As it stands now, without any additional staff, we did the level services for kindergarten. We're anticipating about thirty-seven extra additional staffing, give or take depending how this works out. Using that staff right now, the numbers would be decreased or stay the same as needed. For kindergarten, we're anticipating on the Bridgewater side to bring that down to twenty-four. Not anticipating to take, put any additional on the Rainham side as kindergarten is anticipated to stay at twenty-one, based on current enrollment. For grade one in Bridgewater, we're currently at twenty-six. Adding teachers, we're anticipating to put that down to twenty-four. And Rainham, we're currently at twenty-four, anticipating going down to twenty-one by adding the teacher that we did not fill last year. When I'm done, Mr. Powers, I believe, also has more specific where he was looking to add. Grade two, thirty-one in Bridgewater anticipated going down to twenty-five. In Rainham, staying at twenty-four for grade two. And grade three in Bridgewater, twenty-five to twenty-three. And in Rainham, twenty-seven to twenty-three. Grade four at thirty, going down to twenty-five. In Rainham, thirty, going down to twenty-three. And fifth grade Bridgewater, twenty-nine to twenty-six. And Rainham, twenty-seven to twenty-three. Grade six, twenty-eight to twenty-five. And Rainham, twenty-eight to twenty-four. Grade seven, twenty-eight to twenty-six. Rainham, twenty-five and staying at twenty-five. Grade eight in Bridgewater, twenty-eight, going down to twenty-six. And in Rainham, staying at twenty-six. Again, this is fluid, it's based on current enrollment, moving up to the next grade. Latterly, not laterally rather, moving up. Resources and staffing may be reallocated based on future enrollments and needs of the students. District impact. So the potential increase of this budget is up to thirty-seven staffing positions, which would be classroom teachers at the K through four level where it would make the most impact. Classroom teachers at the middle school level, adding in teams that we're missing right now. Unified arts teachers at the K through eight. For this reason, if we're adding teachers at the K through eight level, we need unified arts teachers because those teachers need prep time. So they need someone to be with those students at that time. Electives at the high school restored or expanded. The high school, I believe, is right now is down six teachers. It's hard to do class size at the high school because grades nine through twelve are very different. There's AP classes, there's general gym classes. There's a lot of different classes, but they are down main English, social studies, science classes and business as well, which is very popular. And I know they're down one business teacher. So adding those back in so Mrs. Watson can have a better schedule and offerings for her students. Also, something that we've talked a lot about is special education positions to remain in compliance. This is also a big cost driver to the district. When we are out of compliance, this costs the district money and it hurts our students that are not receiving the services that they deserve and need in a timely manner. So we also need to look at where we need special education positions to remain in compliance for those students. This would also fill retirements. We currently have sixteen positions this year that are currently set to retire. So it would keep those filled. If we recall, last year we were down twenty-four positions. All but four of those were retirements that we did not fill and four were layoffs that we did not call back. So if the committee wants to come back, we can answer questions. And Mr. Powers does have more specific steps to staffing than he was thinking.
Okay, thank you, Ms. King, for that presentation. Are there any questions from the school committee first about the budget Ms. King presented? Through Ms. King or through the superintendent? Ms. Congrath, over.
My question is hypothetical. If we pass this budget tonight and then it goes to the towns and the town needs some of it potentially for an override and if that override does not pass, what happens at that point?
I'll, I'll take that one. So the, the, the hope would be, the expectation, I should say, is in May, the Bridgewater Town Council has first shot at appropriating the money that we requested on May ninth, I believe. And, and then the Rainham town meeting a week or two after that and to appropriate the money. If they don't appropriate the money or they decide to put a different number in the budget, then we have a real big problem. If they appropriate the money and then call for an override vote, which I would anticipate would be in June sometime, I believe the two towns are going to collaborate on when that might be. And then the vote passes, we're good, we have the budget. If we don't, we don't have a budget yet. So at that point, we, 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 we don't have a budget. And so we will end up going into July essentially on a one-twelfth budget. And I know the superintendent talked to Desi about what a one-twelfth budget really means and if you'd like to elaborate on what that would be.
Sure. I, I mean essentially in simple terms, we're using fiscal year twenty-five and dividing it by twelve. It is designed to be a short-term budget, not something that is sustainable long term. But it does allow the district to pay its, pay its bills and expenses as we continue to work with the towns. There are, you know, some other nuances. Obviously, the state will come in and determine really what that final number is that is driven by the, that drives the budget to the one-twelfth. It does take into consideration the FY twenty-six revenue that we would get in terms of chapter seventy, chapter seventy-one. So there are some new dollars applied to the FY twenty-five budget. So the, the budget could potentially increase because that increased funding, but it's certainly not going to go up significantly. So it's essentially the FY twenty-five budget divided by twelve with some additional revenues built in.
And then, and then the school committee would have to reconvene to have a meeting to send back to the towns to say, okay, we don't have a budget. Here's the budget we'd like you to approve. And again, it would have to be appropriated. And if necessary, although, you know, that's, that's a town decision, have another override vote or just say, you know, this is what it's going, this is what it's going to be. This is what you told us we could afford. I believe Ms. Davenport might have a couple of thoughts on that maybe. I don't know, or you want to save it for later? Okay, if you've got to save it for later, that's fine. So that, that's what happened. Does, does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Other questions for Ms. King or the superintendent at that point? All right.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Me, no, maybe I can see it down there.
So in addition to the slide deck, we were provided some additional information to kind of prep for this meeting. And one of the footnotes was that mentioned that increased costs associated with outfitting new classrooms where space allows. Can you speak a little bit more to that?
Sure, so that's certainly a concern for us when we talk about not just space but also staffing. Ms. King mentioned that this budget is reflective of up to thirty-seven staff members. You know, one of the things we want to make sure before we actually move forward with hiring thirty-seven staff members is that we can sustain that staffing level. Obviously, these numbers are, were just coming to us as of Monday night and depending on with the vote of the school committee tonight, we obviously may have to make some adjustments. But I know the business office has been working on projections to make sure that looking at our costs that we know are going to be going up, contractual increases, additional staff. Could we sustain those thirty-seven positions? And then obviously, we need to look at costs associated with increasing staff. And so, you know, if we're adding new classrooms, obviously we have classrooms that are, the space is currently there, but we may, may need additional resources for those classrooms. So if we're adding thirty-seven, you know, classroom teachers, we're going to need thirty-seven new teacher additions of whatever curriculum materials we're using. So there, there could be additional costs associated with, you know, obviously bringing on additional staff members. Certainly, you know, right now, every student has a, theory has a seat. So we'd be able to repurpose and move furniture around. There will be some, some costs associated with opening these classrooms that either once we're closed or once we're open and have been closed or that we're going to repurpose some space to allow the.
Anything for Ms. Mayville?
I do.
Okay.
And so when you mentioned the additional materials, the detail, the new detail budget included two hundred thousand for curricular resources. Is that what, is that speaking to the additional resources associated with the additional?
Correct, yes, in, in, you know, anticipation of having to purchase new resources for those classrooms for the teachers. So we, we basically, you know, when you looked at the increase from the public hearing budget to this evening, it's approximately, you know, three point six million dollars. Obviously, a large portion of that is going to salaries. We did have to obviously set money aside for health insurance and benefits in the event that any additional staff member does take advantage of our health insurance plan. But then we did set aside some funds in facilities in operation and obviously instructional areas, just in case we needed to, you know, incur any expenses. Expenses getting those rooms up and running in terms of maintenance and operation. Obviously, those rooms are not being used right now, but they are, you know, cleaned on a regular basis. But obviously, you know, will not be cleaned every night. There may be work that needs to be done on the lighting, depending on, you know, what they have in those classrooms in terms of technology. So there's, there's all of those potential costs that exist by working some of these spaces.
And then Ms. Mayville, if I may add to what the superintendent said and Ms. King will correct if I'm wrong. correct me if I'm wrong. One of the things that's really important is when we say we're adding staff, right? Not all staff are created the same as far as what their rate of pay is going to be the following year. Generally, when you hire a new teacher, they get, they get the cost of living increase that is attached to moving grid up a little bit each year, but they also get a step raise as well. So if we moved a grid up one, two, three, four, five, six percent, whatever it is, they get that. But they also get the step increase too. So it may be, you know, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, that, that particular teacher who was hired next year gets as their increase. And so to be able to make sure we can balance that over the long term and not create structural deficits, which is really what we're facing right now and why we're in this position is we've created a structural deficit for ourselves. And so to not create structural deficits, we have to make sure we're very, very cognizant of projected costs going into the future so that we can match expected revenues from the towns and the state to those projected costs and not go above what those revenues are going to be. Because if we, if we decide we want to spend five percent a year, but the towns can only afford three or three and a half percent a year, we can paper that over for a little bit and cut here and cut there, but at the end of the day, you have to pay the paper. So that, I mean, that's my two cents. Did I say anything wrong, Ms. King? No. Ms. Conrad-Labarta?
I just have one other question. At least your powers with the increase in staffing and you talked a little bit about the, like, need to outfit classrooms and all of that kind of facility cost. Do we actually have the physical space in our, because I know some of our schools are busting at the seams.
Sure. Now, that's a great question.
Do we have the physical space?
So obviously, you know, when you look at where we, in Ms. King's slides, where we talked about class size and you saw certain grade levels going down or not going down at all, that was reflective of a couple of different things. One, already looking at what the class size average was projected to be and two, our ability to have space to actually lower class size. I will say this, I think, you know, looking at the projections that Ms. King shared with you, that is using available space that we currently have that wouldn't necessarily force us to have to get super creative, you know, having classes on, in the stage and on, in different areas. It doesn't, right now, force any of our unified arts teachers onto carts. Obviously, we need to be mindful of the enrollment as it currently is versus what it's actually going to be when we open in September. And so again, I just, I say we always want to make sure that any position we add is sustainable, but also, you know, these are projections based on enrollments as of today. And our enrollment, as Ms. King has alluded, you know, has already gone up from October to now, plus thirty-five, and that's additional classroom rate there. We've gone up approximately a hundred students every year. So the numbers that you saw this evening about class size average could look different come September, and we know that. And so, you know, there will be some adjustments made to that chart. Those are simply just predictions. As enrollment comes in over the summer and becomes more evident or even throughout the spring, these will be adjusted so that, you know, there may be some of the upper grade areas that we need some movement, that we may not be able to make any movement. We may have to, as I said, and as the slides said, reallocate some of those resources to the low grades. Again, this is just reflective of looking at an individual grade level in an individual town. We know that come September, or again, you know, we, I say come September because that's when we're opening school, but prior to that, obviously, it would happen. We may still need to balance some of these numbers out. We, you know, realize that if we have some classes twenty-five and some classes twenty-one, we probably need to do some balancing there. But those numbers right now, tonight, are just reflective of the individual grade level in the individual town. And again, still some movement would, would take place. Obviously, if we, you know, start to see an increase in class size at the lower levels, that will present somewhat of a challenge in terms of finding space. This is reflective of using, as you know, the Mitchell Elementary was constructed with three additional classrooms at each level. That would be utilizing all three of those extra classrooms, which are currently being used right now, or two of the three are currently being used. So that would require us to now find spaces for those classrooms that are being used in other locations. So it just, it's now taking up, you know, future available space. On the Rainham side, we do have, at Merrill, at least, you know, we didn't fill one position going into this year, so we do have available space there. We could repurpose some other classroom space there. Loud Liberty will be a little bit more of a challenge. Again, that may start to impact Unified Arts, depending on how many staff members we add there. The Williams, Rainham Middle School, Bridgewater Middle School, they do have space if we were going to add a significant amount. But obviously, our priority right now is really looking at the primary grades where we can. And certainly, the high school has the space if we're able to add additional staff. Along those lines, and I know Ms. King shared this, but I just want to, again, point out a couple of other points about, you know, staffing. As much as we want every staff member to be in a classroom teaching our core subjects, we do have other needs. And so when we look at, you know, special education, we want to make sure all of our special education students are receiving not just a compliant education, but a high-quality education. To be able to receive their services, you know, in an efficient, effective way, that is actually making a difference. So we are being mindful that, you know, of those thirty-seven, if that really is the magic number, a number of those will go to student services or special education. And then Ms. King did allude, you know, as we start to add classroom teachers, we will need to add Unified Arts because our students have to have those same opportunities that the current students are having. So we will need to add potentially music, R and P E and substitute elementary levels and obviously middle school levels as well.
And Mr. Powers, if I may just follow up on that. It, it's really, and I'm really getting to the philosophy of how you go to approach this, not the exact numbers or et cetera, is lower elementary class sizes and ensure special education is funded appropriately and then fill in where we can.
Correct.
That, that's, that's the philosophy that you're approaching it with.
Yes, correct.
And with the, with the money you have, as things evolve, you'll figure out where to deploy the resources.
Right.
Like, other questions? Ms. Maybell?
I'll let my go because I.
Oh, Ms. Loach, I'm sorry. I missed you. My bad.
No worries. So Superintendent, just similar to my question at last meeting, are you confident in this budget that we'll start to be able to address and make some progress on some of the issues that have really become systematic and problematic for the district in the areas of special education and class size?
I am. Obviously, we were able to increase up to thirty-seven staff members, as I just mentioned, that, you know, a portion of that number would be directed towards student services, special education. You know, we could certainly use thirty-seven additional staff members in student services, but being mindful of what we would be able to allocate, I am confident that it would address the needs in stats of lower caseloads, class size, all within the special education department.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Maybell?
I, from the presentation that Mrs. King shared, it, it mentioned that two million will be transferred possibly from E and D. That will be the district's contribution to the budget?
Correct. And that number has been the same throughout, so it's not an additional two million dollars in this budget. It's the same two million that we've talked about, yes?
What would be the balance in E and D once that transfer is made?
Two point, two point two?
So only once we transfer two, that is two, if they close two weeks below, we'll have two point five remaining?
Because we anticipate putting additional money in at the end of this year as well. So being able to use that, what we put in, taking out that two million, we can have two point two.
So just, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Maybell, can I follow up on that? Just because it's been in my mind sometimes. That, that we, we keep rolling over money for E and D year after year, so it's really almost not E and D. It's money that we saved this year because we know we're going to have to spend it next year. With, E and D is meant to be a quote-unquote emergency savings fund, you know, when something goes bad, we need it if a boiler goes, if something goes. That's what we're going to look first because the budget is the budget. And so I, I'm, I'd really like to wean us off that two million dollars myself every year. I understand it is what it is at this point in time, but, you know, that's just my two cents on that one.
And that's helpful because, you know, for every year that I've been here, in two years, I've, I've asked about the spending being reflected on these presentations. And you're, you've mentioned it again here that we productively, or every year, are rolling over this two million. What gets in the way of reflecting the spending when you're presenting in, in this format and putting it on a presentation? We, we show what we asked for, we showed what we received year after year, the historical data. What gets in the way of showing in the same format the spending from one year to one year's historical?
In terms of E and D or just spending in general?
In general. We're looking at a budget on, on a custom to looking at the historic and having that inform the project. And I've been asking about making sure that when we're presenting it, especially to the community, that we also show, show the historic spending. Last meeting I was here, great idea, yep, we'll look into that, but again, the presentation wasn't showing spending. I have to go through the summary, the, the budget summaries and tally this up on my own. So I just want to, I don't want to be insensitive and keep making that request, I'm just wondering what gets in the way of presenting the historical spending when we're looking at the historical ask and award?
Well, I think when we're preparing any type of presentation, we try to take the feedback of all of the school committee and present a, you know, presentation that if and when we can is reflective of that. If it's not, it's, you know, either. We've already factored in spending trends in, in other areas, obviously. We're looking at spending when we're developing our budgets. Those are the numbers that we're looking at.
I'm a little confused, Ms. Maybell, and I, I just, I'm confused myself. And I think I understand what you're asking. I think it makes a lot of sense is, okay, you know, we said, we, we set a budget of, call it ninety million dollars, and, you know, we actually spent eighty-eight or whatever, but that, that might be, that, that's one side of the equation. The other side of the equation that we need to look at is we assumed certain revenues and maybe certain revenues were higher. But I think what you're looking for is like an actual to budget type of report at the end of the year to say, you know, okay, we assume there's much revenue and this much expense and now we've got, you know, we had this much revenue and this much expense, so we were able to throw whatever into E and D. Is that what you're kind of looking for?
Yes, and I know we have the information that, you know, maybe not in a concise way. I did ask for that form over the summer, received it, but when I tried to tally it up and tie it to other information, it didn't tie in. But it's more so for the public as well, right?
Yeah, no, no, it makes sense.
If we successfully advocated for this budget increase, I think it's just respectful to also show what we're spending and how it's been spent.
Okay, yeah, no, that, that makes perfect sense. We can talk about it, you know, and I'll certainly touch base with you offline about the format you might like it and maybe hopefully we can get that, you know, before our next meeting or within the next week or so for everybody. Because I think it is very helpful to understand actual versus expected and, you know, and where did, where, where did we, where were we underclubbing? Sometimes we underclub deliberately. Did we overclub? You know, like, for example, special education, we're always chasing that ball, but we know we have the circuit breaker already coming, so, you know, it's, you know, it just have all those moving pieces come together in one document.
Yeah, this is a holistic story.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Deverito?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Powers, a minute ago, you had stated that based on Mr. Loach's question that you're confident with what is proposed. Looking at your proposed preliminary budget back on January twenty-ninth, has your opinion changed? Because in that presentation, you had indicated that the one oh nine and change was what we need and what the students deserve. So if you could just clarify, you know, your stance.
Sure. Great question. Absolutely. I will still stand by, Mr. Deverito, that one oh nine is reflective of that a hundred percent. I think it provided, obviously, additional staff in these areas to even further reduce caseloads, further reduce class size. It added educational support professionals to assist as well. It also added additional creative service providers. And when I say, you know, added additional, not just one, which we might be able to do here, it could be multiple. It also added, we obviously, we talked about this in link before, it added a special education administrator to help, obviously, with our compliance and overseeing our programming. As we add more staff, we obviously have to add more supervision. And it also provided four team chairs, which would help facilitate the IEP team process. So taking again, some of the responsibilities off of special educators, the school psychologist and, and that staff, relieving them of those particular duties so that they could spend more time with our students. You know, unfortunately, not having those team chairs, they'll still continue to have to, you know, assume those responsibilities. So that one oh nine budget was reflective of, again, trying to ease some of that burden, making sure that, you know, we did have additional staff where and when appropriate. But to your question, the number of staff right now that we have projected for student services, I am confident that that it will have a positive impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. King?
I just, sorry. I just want to somewhat comment to Mr. Dan Marino. I know, obviously, Mr. Powers' budget, his first one that he presented in January, is the ideal budget. It would make the district going forward exactly where we need to be. The budget sum has struggled with listening to this feedback and presenting a budget that is making a positive impact in students with special education, classroom size, offerings, but also knowing that even my level services budget, they could not afford the towns. Today's budget with a seventeen percent increase, they definitely cannot afford. This will have to go to an override. So when we thought about an override and what impact that would have to the towns and their budgets and would the townspeople of Bridgewater and Rainham support that, we tried to be mindful of keeping this figure to something that a taxpayer could agree to and also see a benefit. Is it going to positively impact their students? What are they getting for the tax increase? The level services budget would still need an override and they would not be getting anything back. They wouldn't see any difference. I think this budget, they would see lower class sizes, they would see more offerings, they would see the special education offerings and supports that we need, and so they would be getting something back for their increased taxes, and I'm hoping that the townspeople would support that. So that was our thinking with this number, without going too high, that if we get over a thousand dollars, would taxpayers be able to afford that? And I don't know if they could. We tried to keep it at a number where we were making a positive impact, but also being mindful of the towns.
Thank you, Ms. King. Any other questions for the superintendent? Ms. Maybell?
Will, regardless of which budget passes, will an audit still be, be done by department to ensure efficiency? That will happen regardless?
Well, we have, there's an audit that takes place every year, and so we have to submit that. We have external auditor committees.
Yeah, I'm not talking about audits. I'm talking about efficiency, like departments going over, making sure that the vendors that they've selected have gone out to bid, we have the best prices and all those things. That's a little bit different than.
Are you talking about an operational audit, Ms. Maybell, instead of a financial audit?
Correct.
Yeah. And that, that, I think we're estimating around a hundred thousand dollars or more. And, you know, I, I'd certainly advocate for that, you know, as, as something that, you know, would be appropriate. So, you know, if you're asking people for a whole bunch of money, you probably want to assure them that we're running the most efficiency possible.
And if, even if we can't afford a third party to do that, heads of departments can...
Can certainly do that, sure.
Is that a commitment that...
I think they do that anyways, but they will continue to do that, yes.
All right. Further questions for the superintendent? All right, further questions for the superintendent? All right, see none, go once, go twice, all right, thank you. Mr. Powers, Ms. King, the floor is yours for any motions you'd like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to this mass statute, these motions have to be separate for each thing that we're appropriating. So it will be a series of four separate motions. The first motion would be to approve the transfer of $2 million from the district's ANDD fund to support the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad Laverento. Ms. King, any further discussion?
No, we did have a lot of discussion on this amount, and Ms. Beidol confirmed that she feels comfortable with that number.
Ms. Conrad Laverento, any further discussion? Any other discussion? I would just note that this is not the budget, this is just the school committee's contribution to whatever we're going to spend next year. Okay, so that that's what this motion is. Want to make sure everyone in the audience is clear about that, make sure everybody at home is clear about that, make sure everyone in the community is clear about that. So we're all clear, right?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
What factors or data went into being comfortable with that number? Just wanna get some insight to feeling comf-, like what that means, not comfortable with that.
Yeah, it 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 essentially, and Ms. King again will correct me if I'm wrong, and is that that's the number we have done historically in the last few years, put into the budget. I know historically before that it was much smaller. And it looks as if we're trending to a positive number on E and D for this year so that it would be, again, available for that rollover, which we were just talking about earlier. And that's that's why I think everyone on the budget subcommittee felt comfortable. Ms. King?
So just wanna make sure I understand, the subcommittee felt comfortable with $2 million because you've always done that.
We've done it the past few years, we actually, I I, if Mr. Dolan is in the audience or watching on TV, he's probably rolling his eyes saying, that's way too much money, you should you should do less.
It has ranged between 1.5 to 2 million that we've contributed to the budget. Based on trends, that's how much we will have available to rollover and still leave us some in case of emergencies and for the next fiscal year, should we need that. Again, we don't wanna leave that too short in case we have an emergency, like a roof collapse or some catastrophic event. But also I look at E and D like we are, we are putting some money in as good faith as well. We are investing in our own district, so we have generally put in 1.5 to 2 million every year. As you know, we can't go over our budget because we're regional. We certify our budget, the fact the towns fund us, that is the amount of money we have. We cannot go over that amount, so we have to be conservative and come under budget every year. So based on our looking at every month and every subcommittee for budget, we are trending the same, and we should have those funds available.
Thank you, anything further, Ms. Beidel?
Just, I'll restate what I heard. Historically, we transfer 2 million, 1.5 to 2 million to the budget as good faith, and at the end, we tend to have about 2 million on spent that we wrote back into ANDD. Is that correct?
Essentially, yes, that that's why, we're not, we're not building it up and we're not, you you know, what what towns wanna do is build up there, they call it stabilization, we call it E and D, because you never know when that emergency may hit. You never know when there may be a recession and you wanna make sure you're able to carry the town through without layoffs of police and firefighters, so you 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 have money in the background so you can kind of spread it out as a rainy day fund, so to speak. We need to make sure we're doing that as well. But at the same point in time, if we're asking our towns to, you know, contribute a significant amount more, we should at least as a district contribute something meaningful and positive to this, it's kind of a.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything further on the 2 million number? All right, we're gonna do roll call votes on all of these budget motions, just so we have it down for the record. So, Ms. McDougal, if you'd like to call the roll.
Ms. Beidel?
Yes.
Mr. Devereux?
Yes.
Ms. Martelli?
Yes.
Ms. Davenport?
Yes.
Ms. Conrad Laverento?
Yes.
Mr. Loesch?
Yes.
And Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Yes. Sounding like eight to nine. All right, now we're moving on to the second motion, which in fact is really the budget, the heart of the budget, which is the assessments to the town. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. King.
Thank you. I would make a motion to recommend that, subject to review and verification by the district treasurer, the school committee vote to approve the final budget for fiscal year 2526 excluding debt and capital costs at an amount of $106,205,849. The final budget figure of $106,205,849 to be reduced by anticipated revenue totaling $37,985,022 and an E and D appropriation of $2 million, leaving the amount of $66,220,827 to be paid by the member towns as follows. Rainham's appropriate apportionment of said costs is to be the state's required minimum contribution of $21,396,255 plus the nondiscretionary charges of $4,161,383 for a total due from Rainham in the amount of $25,557,638. Bridgewater's apportionment of said costs is to be the state's required minimum contribution of $33,970,677 plus the nondiscretionary charges of $6,692,512 for a total due from Bridgewater in the amount of $40,663,663,189. The apportionment and nondiscretionary charges are based on the enrollments in the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District as of October 1st, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad Laverento, discussion? Mr. Devereux?
I just, you know, like to thank the, but the subcommittee for, you know, going back to the drawing board and coming up with something that does at least start the process. However, I would like to offer an amendment to adopt the superintendent's proposed budget that was presented on January 29th of this year.
And therefore, the motion would have to be adjusted appropriately to reflect those numbers. All right, that that's an amendment, so the amendment takes precedent. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by? Ms. Martelli? Okay, therefore, Mr. Devereux, you have the floor as the motion maker.
So just, you know, as I said the last, at the public hearing, this is my third cycle. And the first cycle, I remember, remember Mr. Dolan saying, you know, we're gonna, you know, tell the towns that we need this, they need to have, you know, support us, we, you know, while we do have some revenue, you know, we rely on them. And we're going, you know, essentially put our foot down. We came back, the presentation was essentially status quo. Last year, we cut positions. This year, we, you know, while what's proposed is a good first step, I can't get past the fact that what was proposed by Mr. Powers is needs and what our students deserve. It's been too long that we've been kicking this can down the road. Regional school district to support it.
Thank you, Ms. Martelli. Did you want to speak?
I I just seconded your discussion.
Okay, no, that's fine, if you.
I totally agree. The budget that we proposed this evening, I know, if you're looking at class size, mind your thing, of course, we wanna lower the class sizes, okay, from two, but three, four, five, we're gonna be going from 30 to 23 in the fourth grade in Rainham, 30 to 25 in Bridgewater in the fourth grade. So I think what we have is a is a solid plan. However, it's not.
We we, yeah, and and we understand that, thank you.
What we have, we are gonna make progress, but.
Okay, other, other comments? Ms. Conrad Laverento?
I appreciate Mr. Devereux, Ms. Martelli said, I agree, we we need to get somewhere. I I'm appreciative of all of the audience, the the stakeholders, families, teachers, community members, and all the comments that we've received over the last few weeks on this. And as much as I would like to vote yes on that 109 million, I am concerned about this passing and an override and passing this on to homeowners and the increase in our taxes fiscally at the state level, at the federal level. There is so much uncertainty with Alba's, even all of us with our jobs. I just cannot see passing that much of an increase to homeowners at this point in time. I think the 106 gets us to a place where we are making steps in the right direction, is fiscally responsible. And I just, I, again, as much as I would love to go with the 109, I don't think it's a time and the economy and with our seniors and with everyday citizens that we can pass that much of an increase on to homeowners.
Further comment, Ms. Devereux?
Just to really echo what Laura said as well. Just to really echo what Laura said as well, and I know in Rainham, there, you still have the dedication and then a closing of a tax gap for the safety building, I bet there's some similar issues going on in Bridgewater, so I hope it for path, like, I mean, I think everybody's about to give the 109 million dollars, no doubt. But we need to look, obviously, to what what has potential to pass, and that's my two cents.
Okay, further comments? Yes, Mr. Loesch?
So I I definitely hear both points, and I I think they've both been very reasonable. But I think that the question is that when, when does this happen? Because right now, are we gonna end up being in the same position for next year? Are we gonna be putting forth again another override to get to the place where we want to be? Because it's significant, it is, I completely acknowledge that. So when do we actually do that? Are we gonna end up in the same spot, going through the same things over again in the same process? It's gonna be like Groundhog Day. And I'd love to think the state is gonna change the strict funding structure, and they're gonna come through. But honestly, we've been having the same conversations, and people have been sending the same emails to the state year after year, and there has been limited to no change.
Thank you, Mr. Loesch. Further comments, questions, issues?
So I wanna kind of, I wanna follow up on, and get some clarification on what Mr. Loesch had said. Is it possible that we would be back here at that 106 and then needing to discuss requesting another override? Is is that what we're looking at with the lower numbers?
I mean, I think that's what we have to assume, because saying 109 is where we need to be, class size is where they need to be, to start making progress on things like reducing out of district tuition, bring kids back within the district so we can educate them within their home community to get our kids the education they deserve, and what Ryan put forth originally. I I don't see any other way.
Ms. King?
I understand what you all are saying, but I do not think it is fiscally responsible to put a 109 million dollar budget on the towns at a 30% increase. There are so many unknowns. It has to go to Bridgewater Town Council, Rainham Town Meeting, and pass to go on an override vote. Then voters would have to go out and vote for that. That would be a huge increase to all of their taxes, and I don't know that they would support that much of an increase. And if it fails at any point, we are then to a devastating 112 budget and then a 3%, 4.6% budget, which is still devastating. Just to make a point, and I would rather put forward a budget that we have a huge chance of and make a positive impact and also voters can get behind because they'll see the impact and it would be manageable with their taxes. Because if this fails, yes, it's gonna make an impact on the, everyone's gonna know, but it's gonna hurt our children and our teachers that are in the classroom. When we cut 40 teachers or more, it's gonna hurt the kids. So we don't wanna make an impact on our kids right now, we wanna make a positive impact that we have a chance of.
Thank you, further, Mr. Devereux?
You know, I I've heard both both sides, I mean, obviously, I I put forth this motion, I I support my motion. You know, I just wanted to bring attention to the committee, you know, I had an opportunity to speak with a teacher in our district this past week, as committee members. And she had brought up about having a friend in Dartmouth. And, you know, we've seen in recent weeks, in the news, the newspapers, yes, I still read the newspaper, I'm kind of archaic that way, that, you know, other school districts, regional and non-regional, are having difficulties. I get that, I understand that. But Dartmouth has lowered class sizes. And again, we could be able to, in oranges, I have all the details about Dartmouth, but they're already looking at concerns about their class sizes being raised. They haven't had that yet in their budgets, they're already looking at that. We've, as again, seen it year after year. When is enough? Now, I understand, and I I I get being fiscally conservative, making sure that we can put forth something that on an override, the public would come out. I'm going against what my parents want. But I always harden back to something that I heard coaching baseball with the Monty Turner. Do what's right. Just because it's hard doesn't mean it's the right, it's not the right thing to do. So I'm urging my fellow colleagues up here to do what's right for our children.
Thank you, Mr. Devereux, further comments, questions, concerns?
Another question, just.
Ms. Beidel?
So on the slide deck, the slide that shows the difference between with without additional staff and with additional staff, that, those figures are with for the 106 million, correct? Yes. And that is also based on current number of students, correct? And historically, we know that the numbers have increased. Am I, on the right path, like I've.
It it depends on your view of history, but yeah, recently, recently.
Okay, so the likelihood, based on the developments that has happened in in over the past two years, is to Mr. Powers's point, that these numbers are are fluid, and they're already, they're still pretty high. Just because we're going from, you know, high to a little bit lower, doesn't mean that the class sizes are still not high. At the 106, these numbers realistically are likely to go full height. As far as class sizes. That's what I'm interpreting based on the information shared tonight. Am I incorrect?
It could, yeah, yeah, I mean, we we don't, we could predict the future, we're only retired in Florida. Yeah. Anything further, Ms. Beidel?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, anything further from the committee? Quickly, a question from me, Mr. Devereux.
Yes.
If this, if your your suggestion for a budget passes. If this, if your, your suggestion for a budget passes, what is your solution if there is an unfavorable override vote?
Well, to be a hundred percent honest with you, Mr. Fitzgibbons, I think we go to a one-twelfth budget. I think, I understand the concerns about taxes and everything, but we're messing around with our children's future and education, and at that point, those that are against an override, you know, will need to understand how important it is to fund the regional school district.
So, so you're, you're comfortable with that going forward?
Sometimes you have to make it hurt to get what you want.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Davenport, and Ms. Conrad Lovrento.
Be hurting the kids too, so.
Who pays for the kids? The parents?
No, we're not, we're not talking from the audience, please. Yes.
I would just, I think a one-twelfth budget is so detrimental to our kids. Obviously, I have two kids in high school, and all this weekend, last week, my kids have come home and asked me, because they've been asked by other kids in the high school, what's going to happen if we lose sports? My kids are talking about it, they're hearing teachers talk about it at the high school level, that sports are going to be lost. Don't call the kids out, but again, captains of sports teams are talking to my children who know I'm on school committee, asking what's going to be happening if we do not have this team next year. That is unacceptable to me, and I cannot accept a one-twelfth budget. And a one-twelfth budget would have a detrimental effect on our sports and on everything in our town, our extracurriculars. And I don't think we can move forward. I, I could not imagine what that would mean to our kids.
It would mean higher class sizes and special ed being out of compliance is what it would mean.
One-twelve, it goes beyond the budget.
So, Ms. Martelli, I, I didn't, I didn't quite understand if you were in support or not of Mr. Davenport's motion. Yeah, but, because I was going to ask you the same question, because you exacted through all the budget in subcommittee meetings, so you, you understand where all the different numbers come from, so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask Ms. McDougall to call the roll on the amendment, on the amendment.
On the amendment. Vote for, on the amendment, Mrs. Mayville, pass. Mr. Dan Marino?
Yes.
Mrs. Martelli?
No.
Mrs. Davenport?
No.
Mrs. Conrad Lovrento?
No.
Mr. Loesch?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No. So that's a five to three against.
Well, I passed, I just passed.
Well, it's effectively a no vote when you abstained.
She did abstain, she said pass.
What are you going to, what are you, oh, then it's five to two. That's fine, you, you abstained from your vote, Ms. Mayfield, you like that?
I didn't want to abstain, I just wanted to pass, to hear what it was.
That's not appropriate when you get a roll call vote, but go ahead, make your vote.
Yes.
Yes, okay, five to three. Five to three against the amendment. Okay, so, is there a motion for reconsideration made by Ms. Davenport? Second by Mrs. King.
Are we going back to the original?
No, we're going to reconsider the amendment, just in case anyone thinks it's like, can change people's minds now that they know the vote. Yeah, we're going to have a motion to reconsider, I think.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad Lovrento. With that, now we're discussing whether we should reconsider it or not. So, does anyone have any further comments about reconsidering the vote? We just don't.
No.
No, no, okay. So, seeing that, Ms. McDougall, will you call the roll on a motion to reconsider?
Mrs. Mayville?
What am I voting on that?
If you want to keep talking about the amendment Mr. Dan Marino proposed, you vote yes. If you don't, if you want to stop talking about it, you vote no.
Oh, no.
Mr. Dan Marino? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McDougall.
That's okay, Mrs. Dan Marino?
No.
Mrs. Martelli?
Do you want to keep talking? Okay.
Mrs. Davenport?
No.
Mrs. Conrad Lovrento?
No.
Mr. Loesch?
No.
Mrs. King?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No. Okay, so, with that, we're done talking about that amendment. Are there any other amendments that anyone would like to make on this number before we go to the main motion? Seeing none, all right, so now we're back to debate on the main motion. Ms. King, I believe you made the motion, so you have the floor.
I don't have anything further to say. I feel strongly that this is the best budget that we can put forward to make a positive impact. I know that it's going to be a slower incremental impact than some of our members prefer, but I think it's being fiscally responsible and making an impact.
Thank you. And I forget, Ms. McDougall, who's the second? On the main motion.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm way down the page here. I apologize. Was Mrs. Conrad Lovrento?
So, Ms. Conrad Lovrento, you're next.
I, I would say is, you know, this is, I think the budget is the right step, and it makes a positive impact for our kids. I mean, a fifteen, sixteen percent overall increase is no joke. I mean, this is one of the biggest budgets we've passed, and increases that we have passed since I've been on the committee. So this is a significant step, a significant step in the right direction.
Further discussion on the main motion, Ms. Davenport.
Yeah, this room's on behalf here, so I just want to thank everyone for being here today. As members of our school committee, of our school community, we all have one shared goal, to provide the best possible education and experience for our students. Achieving this goal relies not only on the dedication of our teachers and staff, but also the resources available to us. As you all know, at, at previous meetings, two different proposals' budgets have been presented, one being at the superintendent's initial proposed budget, which was an increase of over nineteen million from last year, while the level services budget came in at roughly twelve million more than last year. Since even our level services budget needed override on the ballot, I am willing to vote on this budget that man flies in between. Reducing the student to teacher ratio, our classroom sizes should be the focal point of this additional money. I know I have received and responded to numerous emails from parents within the community regarding the proposed budget. I have mentioned that I cannot in good conscience vote for an even larger amount without having the funds secured, as I am afraid of ending up in a one-twelfth budget situation or even potentially depleting resources from our departments within our towns. However, after attending further, further budget subcommittee meetings and discussing next steps, it was assured to me that if the override does not pass, that we can then come back and pass a budget that is affordable to the town by that time. I mentioned at previous meetings that if the town were to bring this to the ballot, it may have been, may have, may be of interest of including an efficiency type of audit to ensure that our funds and resources are utilized to the best of their ability, and I still stand by that statement. This will assure residents, especially who are not in favor, that we are doing what is best with their hard-earned dollars. I am more than happy to have the town officials put the override on the ballot and ultimately have the voters decide. I do ask that everyone accept the will of the voters, whatever that turns out to be. Regardless of the outcome of the vote, I promise to continue work diligently alongside my other school committee members, as well as Mr. Powers and his team, to assure we are providing the best possible education and experiences for our students. That is within our means. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport. Other comments on the main motion? Seeing, oh, yeah, Ms. Martelli.
No, I was just going to say that we did work very hard, many, many meetings, to come up with this budget, and I think it is in the best interest of everybody to pass this budget.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to add, if anyone has any further comments, I'd just like to add, I think we heard from, at almost all the people in this room represented, that class size is the most important issue to, to the district right now, in, you know, dwarfing, dwarfing every other concern that, that we may face. And so, we, we tried to be respectful and responsible and responsive to those voices after the public hearing and significantly increased that level services budget because we heard it, because we, we had emails, because we had in-person meetings, texts, calls, et cetera. And, and that's what, that's what you can do as, as a, as a group of public. And now, we're rolling the dice on a, on a big number. If this budget passes tonight, we're rolling the dice on a big number, and everybody here who wants that big number needs to get out and work hard to ensure that that big number is actually in fact funded. We have a very, very small needle to thread here with two towns and two votes, right? Both appropriating authorities, the town council and the town meeting in Rainham have to agree to fund the budget we're going to vote for. They have to agree to that. If they don't, that's a, a situation I don't want to contemplate right now. It's bad enough, we have, we have what we have in front of us, but I don't want to contemplate that. So I'm assuming both the town meeting and the town council will appropriate the money. The towns don't have this money to pull out of the drawer or take in taxes next year, so they'll probably have to call for an override. As I've said all along, the only two boards who can call for a, a special election for an override are the Board of Selectmen in Rainham and the Town Council in Bridgewater. And if, if there's support for spending the money by the appropriating body, I would hope that those two bodies then schedule a vote and work together to schedule a vote on the same day as quickly as possible, before July 1st, so we don't get into any trouble with the state. And that's why I'm pleading both towns here tonight. And then, once we do that, then we need to, you know, to, to get this budget in, you know, in effect, that vote, those votes need to happen positively going forward from each of the towns. And that, that's another big challenge that all of us here are going to be facing. This is not a school community problem. It's not a teacher problem, it's not a parent problem, it's a community problem, okay? And we all have to work together to ensure the best outcomes we can get for the district and for our two towns, so that, so that we're all able to move forward together, and as I've said before, to be, be able to do more with more, because we can't do more with less anymore. So that said, Ms. McDougall, if you'd like to call the roll on that main motion, oh, Mr. Dan Marino.
I missed my inter before you.
Sorry.
That's all right. I mean, you still, if you love me on these stats, I can. You know, it, it, this, you know, I'm always going to advocate for more, and I will say, you know, my, my point was not harm children, as I was alluding to. I want what's best. I, I've said it time and time again, you pointed it out tonight, I am a product of this school district. I have pride in this school district. It hurts me to see what we're dealing with right now. And I've talked to classmates, I have a real close friend, classmate, that is on the advisory board in Bridgewater, and we've had our arguments about this. But, you know, my concern, why I brought that amendment, I think was echoed by Mr. Loesch, that I will, are, and I'll say you, because I'm, I will be here. Are you going, are we going to be here next year doing the same thing? And now we're looking at cutting these positions. So while I think this is great, that, you know, there is some reduction in class sizes, we're going to be in compliance with special education, I just hope that this is a starting point and not let's just throw some additional money and then retreat.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Any further comments? Seeing none, Ms. McDougall, if you'd call the roll on the main motion.
On the main motion, Mrs. Mayville?
Pass.
Mr. Dan Marino?
Ms. Mayfield?
Yes.
You, you, you vote yes or no when your name is called, please.
No.
Mr. Dan Marino?
Yes.
Mrs. Martelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes.
Mrs. Conrad Lovrento?
Yes.
Mr. Loesch?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, that being unanimous, well, thank you. And one more, Ms. King.
And the last vote is the debt. I would make a motion to recommend that sub-direct the review and verification by the district treasurer. The school committee vote the final budget for fiscal year 2026, debt costs as follows: Rainham costs with bond interest and principal of five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents to be reduced by state reimbursement and grant distribution in the amount of zero dollars for a total due from Rainham of five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. And Bridgewater's cost with bond interest and principal of three million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-three cents to be reduced by state reimbursement and other grant distributions in the amount of zero dollars for a total due from Bridgewater with bond interest and principal of three million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-three cents for a total debt of four million, eighty-one thousand, thirty, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven.
There's a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Martelli. Ms. King, any further discussion?
No.
Ms. Martelli? And any other discussion? Seeing none, Ms. McDougall, if you'd call the roll.
Mrs. Mayville?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Marino?
Yes.
Mrs. Martelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes.
Mrs. Conrad Lovrento?
Yes.
Mr. Loesch?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, that being unanimous, well, thank you. And one more, Ms. King.
And the last vote is the debt. I would make a motion to recommend that sub-direct the review and verification by the district treasurer. The school committee vote the final budget for fiscal year 2026, debt costs as follows: Rainham costs with bond interest and principal of five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents to be reduced by state reimbursement and grant distribution in the amount of zero dollars for a total due from Rainham of five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. And Bridgewater's costs with bond interest and principal of three million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-three cents to be reduced by state reimbursement and other grant distributions in the amount of zero dollars for a total due from Bridgewater with bond interest and principal of three million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-three cents for a total debt of four million, eighty-one thousand, thirty, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven.
There's a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Martelli. Ms. King, any further discussion?
No.
Ms. Martelli? And any other discussion? Seeing none, Ms. McDougall, if you'd call the roll.
Mrs. Mayville?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Marino?
Yes.
Mrs. Martelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes.
Mrs. Conrad Lovrento?
Yes.
Mr. Loesch?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, that being unanimous, well, thank you. And one more, Ms. King.
And the last vote is the debt. I would make a motion to recommend that sub-direct the review and verification by the district treasurer. The school committee vote the final budget for fiscal year 2026, debt costs as follows: Rainham costs with bond interest and principal of five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents to be reduced by state reimbursement and grant distribution in the amount of zero dollars for a total due from Rainham of five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. And Bridgewater's costs with bond interest and principal of three million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-three cents to be reduced by state reimbursement and other grant distributions in the amount of zero dollars for a total due from Bridgewater with bond interest and principal of three million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-three cents for a total debt of four million, eighty-one thousand, thirty, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven.
There's a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Martelli. Ms. King, any further discussion? We sit up here, go to meetings we do, et cetera, et cetera. If we didn't love the district and wanted to succeed, and I thank each and every one of you for being here tonight, making your voice heard, and being part of moving things forward, hopefully in a positive direction for our district. Thank you. That said, we're moving on to Policy Subcommittee Report. Mr. DeMarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Policy Subcommittee met March 20th in the superintendent's conference room. In attendance was myself, Chair, Mr. Loesch, Mrs. Davenport, Mrs. Conrad LaRenta, Superintendent Ryan Powers, as well as Assistant Superintendent Mr. Barry. Before us was one item, policy BPA School Committee powers and duties. There was a proposal to amend the policy to kind of look at some trends that were happening and settlements, you know, so we could craft some policies. There were concerns regarding confidentiality, as well as where the line between what the administration is doing with that and where it's also reported. There was a three-year-long goal to table it, to kind of reassess it, get, again, look at the school committees, councils, recommendations, as well as the district's councils' recommendations when it was there. It will be taken up at the next Policy Subcommittee meeting. We voted to pass to approve the minutes of our last meeting, which was January 15th, and that completes my floor.
Thank you, Mr. DeMarino. No action needed by the full committee?
None.
Thank you. Unfinished business, a proposal of 2526 school calendar. We'll turn that over to Mr. Powers.
Actually, Mrs. Barry has the information on the calendar.
We'll turn it over to Ms. Barry.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'm not sure if you want me to just review changes that we made since the initial reading. I'm getting this, okay? So we made some changes since the first reading that you did as a committee. In December and January, there was a suggestion that we look at full days of December 22nd and 23rd as the start of that holiday week. Right now, we have a full day and a half day on the calendar. We kept it a full day and a half day despite getting that feedback, although appealing, if we move ahead with that change, it would be getting out of school two days later. And there's always a possibility that that would be extended due to the climate weather days, and June can get pretty hot. The other change that we made since the first reading was based on KIDAC around having an in-service or a half-school day close to a holiday break. So we had originally had February 11th, 2026, on the calendar as one of those days. We changed it to a full day of school because it's the week before a holiday break. After the first reading, we also made a change to the early release date on March 25th, 2026, adding that there'll be no pre-K sessions that day. Again, that's new since the first reading, and the reason for that is having no preschool that day allows us to do screenings as well as subsequent evaluations, rather than them taking place in June. And then, as Mr. Powers stated earlier today, MCAS is not going away. We still don't have the dates for next year, so as is often the case, as much as we think that we have the calendar finalized, sometimes we do have to go back, just to commit to make some changes once we have MCAS dates from the state.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the calendar as presented by Ms. Barry?
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. Loesch, seconded by Ms. Davenport. Any further discussion on the calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Ms. Barry. Thank you very much, the committee. All right, moving on to new business, we've got approval.
It will have been posted on the district website where the line is to power, so parents can know when.
Ah, yes. Whatever does this Friday is going out, so we'll be sure to include that and then go post the points as soon as possible.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, approval of payroll warrants dated March 6th and March 202025. Is there a motion to approve? Made by Mr. DeMarino?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Under new business, other business that may probably come before the school committee after the agenda is posted. This is more informational for the school committee. I want to, I want to let everybody know that Ms. Martelli has decided that as she's leaving the committee after the election, she'd like to step down from her positions on the negotiating and budget committee. To that end, I'd leave Mr. Loesch, he can accept an appointment to those two committees, and I will be doing that as my appointive power of the chair effective immediately. So thank you, Mr. Loesch, for doing that. That requires no discussion or vote, it's the chair's prerogative. Moving on to public comment, we'll open the public comment again. This time, if anyone has a comment, again, try to keep it to three minutes, but we'll try to keep, you know, give it a little way, maybe up to about 15 for public comment at this point. So anyone, feel free to come up, identify yourself, name and address for the record. Yes, ma'am?
Elizabeth Sharp, 1000 South Street. I just wanna say thank you to everyone on the school committee, Mr. Powers, McDougall back here, especially the budget sub. Thank you for all of your hard work. I know it was very fluid, you were listening to the community, weren't just, I think you had one thing in mind, and then you heard our voices, and I know you're representing us, and you showed us that tonight. I definitely understand and hear some of the committee members, your thought process there, going for the 109 budget, and I respect that. I mean, yeah, that would be great, but I also think what was decided tonight was for the best of our community. I think it has the best chance of passing. It makes a major impact. It's gonna make a huge difference for our school committee, for our school district. And I think it has a better chance of passing, and I think it's gonna, you know, really just get us going in the right direction. I don't see us coming back here after that, having to come back and say, you know, here we are again. So just a huge, huge step tonight, so I just feel like I had to come and thank you, because Lord knows I've spent enough time here, trying and complaining and calling an email. And I know there's still a lot of big decisions coming up now with our Town Council, our Select Board, and then ultimately hopefully going for an override. So I know there's still a lot of work here, and you have our support behind you, hopefully getting the community to see that. This is gonna change our community's school district, and we want a school community where we can be proud of our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp.
Carly Hunter, 22 J Drive.
Ms., if you could step out from in front of the podium, you'll get on camera.
Hi, my name is Carly Hunter, and I am a fifth grade student at Rainham Middle School. I promise I won't take too much of your time. Luckily, you get to hear from me instead of my mom. Trust me, you're getting the better deal. I would like to share that I'm here because my mom and my teachers have taught me to use my voice for good. Tonight, I would like to tell you what it's like to be a kid in a class of 30 students. Right now, learning can be challenging. Large class sizes make it difficult for me to focus, get help from my teachers, and feel confident asking questions in front of everyone. Did you know we have 90 students in our gym class? Maybe you saw my interview on Friday where I told Mr. Paul Burton that kids deserve better. I am speaking up for my friends and my little brother when I say we deserve better. We deserve classrooms where we can actually focus, ask questions, and get help when we need it. Our teachers work so hard, but if we don't get enough money, things will just keep getting harder for students and teachers. I want others, especially kids, to know that public education matters, and we need to fight for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Other public comment? I'm gonna challenge anyone to come up after child. Yes, ma'am?
Christine Beney, 36, Magnolia Way. I just wanna reiterate the fact that she's standing here. She is the reason why we do this. Our children are the reason why we do this. This is why we're here, this is why you dedicate all of your time. This is why you see many of our community members in front of you at all times, asking you to make these tough decisions. So I'll reiterate what Bitsy said, thank you for coming to a decision that takes the step in the right direction. With that foresight, that things are gonna be expected, accountability is gonna be expected going forward, being fiscally responsible, so making sure that foresight is there. Thank you for coming up. This is exactly why we do this. Carly, right? Good job, Carly. Same in Rainham. Good job.
Thank you.
Jane Patrick, Vice President of BIA. Caroline, great job. Still boring, wish they knew. But this is more of a question, I know you can't answer it, but something to think about or even give back to us at the next meeting or so. So I've heard a lot about the budget procedure in the 112 budget, which is somewhere where none of us wanna go to, all right? But I haven't heard anything about the step before that, which is a district-wide town meeting in which the budget, our live budget could be approved. So maybe I'm missing something, but I don't think I've heard anyone mention that, so...
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. We can certainly address that question at a future meeting.
MGL 71.
Yes, thank you.
It's a long walk all the way in the back. Paul Murphy, 25 Ashford Lane in Bridgewater. Current Vice President of the Bridgewater Town Council. I just wanted to acknowledge folks and the hard work that's been done to get to this point. I want you to know that I, as a councilor, hear you. I've met with folks one-on-one. I don't know that many other councilors have stood up and advocated for you at these meetings. I don't know if my counterparts in Rainham have done the same, but I'm here tonight, as the budget now lies in our hands, to tell you that I will advocate for this budget to appear on a ballot coming up, because I believe it is our responsibility to put it for the town to make those decisions. That's all. I'm not up for reelection, you have me for another year, of course, I'm not getting paid. But let me be clear, there are four positions on our Town Council that will be up for election this coming April, and I implore you to ask those folks what their plan is to vote on this, because that could sway the decision. So please, reach out to those folks, attend community forums, and ask them those questions. And the last thing I'll say is, please reach out to the councilors, all of us, and to the Select Board members, because one email, one phone call, it makes a huge difference. I'll tell you, I never thought I'd be understanding how the laws work for wildlife in my town, and why my neighbor can have 10 chickens and a goat, but one email led me to look into that a little bit more and understand it. So that one email that you sent to your councilor may make the difference. So I just implore you to take the time, send those emails, reach out to those councilors, and really push them to make a decision on where they're gonna vote on this, because ultimately it's up to them to be on the ballot. The last thing I'll say to you is, it doesn't end there, right? There is still a lot more work to do, and some of the school board committee members admitted to that tonight. I personally reached out to our state senator and met one-on-one with him to express the formula in Chapter 70 and 71, how that's being allocated isn't enough, right? And so there's work to be done, and that work has to continue, it has to keep going on. Again, I implore you to keep having that battle, keep making that fight, because we're gonna make the difference together. So I just wanted to be clear on my stance tonight. I don't think it takes much looking into from this point on. I've spent the past three months with you all at these meetings, and I wanna be clear, this is something that I will support from the Bridgewater Town Council. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna just say, and then I'll reiterate what I said, it's not a response, Mr. Murphy. I'll reiterate what I said at the beginning of the meeting, we have officials here from Bridgewater and Rainham, and I believe each and every one of those officials wants to do the right thing for the district. So I thank them all for being here, listening to us, and, you know, making sure that they understand what we need. So thank you. Any further public comment going on?
I don't see.
I don't see any, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Say some public statements.
As long as it's not in response.
It's not in response. So I just wanted to address my colleagues here. As everybody knows, just like Ms. Martelli, I will be, I didn't run for reelection. I got into this to make the school district a better place for not only everybody else's children, but mine. I put family first, and it was a hard decision to choose between coaching my son's team in the summer and attending school committee meetings. Where our next meeting, April 16th, I'll be there supporting my daughter at the world, her Open World Championship, her All-Star cheer. So I don't know if I'll be able to zoom in, so I just wanted to thank everybody up here, thank the public for trusting me to do the right thing. And this won't be the last you see me, I get to be your point on the side, just like Bitsy and Ashley, and I look forward to doing that.
Thank you, Mr. DeMarino, and thank you for your service, and we hope you're able to come to your last meeting, so we can give you a little bit of a second. All right, with that said, is there a motion to adjourn? Made by Ms. Davenport, seconded by Mr. Loesch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.